Yep, I'll call this meeting to order. First agenda item, review and discussion of the proposed compensation packet for Yuma School District One. Mr. Ponder and Mr. Munoz.
Thank you, everybody. We're excited to present our compensation benefits recommendation. I'm going to take one and pass that down right here. So we have about ninety slides we're going to go through. No, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding.
Three minutes a slide.
Thank you.
Now, it's about thirty slides. We wanted to just include some history as well. It's important to have that, especially with the new board members. That's what that's going to come next. So you can follow along with us. We want to start off with just the agenda of what we're going to be reviewing today. Get this into presentation mode. So we're going to start off with, whoa, that's not connected.
Yeah, on three of the four.
No, thanks.
There we go. Well, we can look at these slides over here. No, no, it's fine, let's go here. So here's the agenda. We're going to start with the Compensation Committee. Just a little bit about that group and what it does and how, as long as it's been in session. We're going to go into the district financial position that we have going into next year. And then, what the Compensation Committee likes to do before is do a little drum roll before they see the salary recommendations that we're proposing for next year. And then we're going to talk a little bit more about insurance as well. So, our first slide here just showing our Compensation Committee members. So I want you to take a moment either to look at your screen or the printout that you have in front of you. And I want you, what do you notice? What are some things that you notice with the Compensation Committee members? Or their positions? Is there anything that stands out to you?
You said various layers, which I appreciate from all different, seems like functions.
Very good, yes. So, there is a representative from each of our employee groups in this committee. Which is fantastic to have all those different perspectives. What else do you notice? Just one more thing. I gave you a little clue, little legend at bottom.
Some people that have been here a bit.
Yes, so we've had the committee in place since 2018. And you can see all of those employees have been there since the inception of the committee. So they were part of the structuring of the committee. How should we move forward with the committee navigating some tough challenges that we're going to talk about in a little bit as well. So, just to kind of give you some context, we have representation across the district when it comes to employees' perspectives. Thank you, Suzie.
You're welcome.
It was thought weird for me to go like this.
Tax support.
Luciano's going to have a sore neck.
So, just great to have that context going into the conversation. So, here's a recent photo of our last meeting. I promise I was there, I was taking the photo, so I'm not in the picture. But you can see the representatives from each of the groups there. And we have this tabletop conversation about each of the recommendations. So, the presentation that I share, that we're sharing with you today, they have reviewed and they supported as well, okay? So just going back, sorry, really quickly, what is the mission of the Compensation Committee? We want to make sure that we work together so that the committee can provide feedback regarding two things. Compensation and benefits. In addition, how can we enhance the communication that goes out to all the employee groups as well? And they're very proud of their successes that they have since 2018. So moving on, just a little pop quiz. Since 2018, what has the Compensation Committee helped the district in navigating collaboratively? So take a moment to look at some of these options. And then I'll show the answer. So rapid minimum wage increase, increasing teacher pay, insurance transition to a self-funded model, relieving compression of hourly support staff positions due to minimum wage increases, various position reclassifications, longevity salary adjustments, or all of the above. Bingo, I should have brought some prizes. Should have brought some prizes.
Because I also have since 2018, got to do all of that at work.
So it hasn't been an easy feat, right? So it's been something that we've taken on step by step, looking at the long picture, what can we do to help and alleviate some of these concerns that we've seen surface across the district. And I think they've done a phenomenal job. So, there's that. Next, we're going into, what is the district financial position going into 2026?
So this is one of the tighter years we've had of the last three or four with, as they're going away. And then, the state had boosted some funding in previous years. This year, we had to fight to get a couple of different weights back in order to get into the funding formula. So looking into next year, we're anticipating about $785,000 in new money. And so we come to that number based on the 2% inflation adjustment that the state will give us once the budget is over. That's part of the mandate that's in the constitution. It's either 2% or inflation, whichever is cheaper for them. And so usually, it's been 2% for quite a while because we've had some pretty high inflation for the last five years, three years, something like that. We're anticipating a 1% declining student enrollment. Again, a lot of that is just to be conservative because we're still a little bit unsure with what our kindergarten enrollment's going to look like. With declining birth rates, and not exactly sure the full saturation of ESAs yet. We're just trying to navigate, kind of where are we going to be each year with kindergarten? So we're anticipating a 1% decline. This year, we didn't see that, but we budgeted for it. And so it kind of put us in a better position to be conservative with that. So between those two, we're looking at about $785,000 in new money to move into next year.
So that made the Compensation Committee a little nervous. This is the pie that we have to work with to look at raises, with insurance costs, things of that nature. So, we're going to continue a little bit more information.
But some of the good news is we have planned and tried to put money aside and be conservative. And with that conservative budgeting, it does give us some opportunities to kind of navigate some of the lower points with money that we've been able to put away. And so two of those buckets you see is, between capital and M&amp;O, we have about $3 million that we encumber just to kind of hold a place that we don't actually intend to spend each year, just to create a little bit of a buffer. So we will have that money from this year to move into next year to roll forward. Obviously, and as long as nothing happens this year where we will need it. But we don't anticipate that being this far into the year. We usually have seen any kind of an event that might necessitate us using that money. So very confident that we'll have that money to move into next year. So we would have a little over 3 million, but I'd just say 3 million to be conservative. It's 2.3 in M&amp;O and a million in capital. So 3.3 total, we just use three to be a little bit conservative. So we've got that money to carry forward into next year. And then the other one is in the insurance fund. We did prepay a decent chunk of money, just to kind of put some cash into that to make sure it sustains its first few years and we kind of get it off and rolling really well. And so, those are the two kind of larger buckets of money that we have as we look for ways to fund any type of a compensation package moving forward. Any questions on those two particular items?
All right, moving on to salary, increased recommendations. So we want to start off with a group that we have no control over their raise. So this group is called the Minimum Wage. These are hourly employees that make minimum wage. This is not determined by the district, this is determined by the Industrial Commission of Arizona, based on the cost of living, inflation. Every year in September, they'll give us a rate of what that's going to look like. It's varied across each of the years. This is an unfunded mandate as well. So it has to be something the district is going to supplement when it comes to those increases that are mandated by the state. And so I wanted to show you, so we're budgeting conservatively, that we think that this employee group is going to increase by 50 cents next year in January of 2026. So every January is when their raise is effective. And I'm sure you can recall from the board names, the agenda items that we've included in the past as well. But what I wanted to show you, a little pop quiz unless you look ahead, is since 2015, how much of an increase do you think this employee group has seen since 2015? Any guesses? All right, no guesses, I'm going to show you. Here's the answer. 2015, they were at 805. And with Prop 206 passing and being effective, January of 2016, now they're up to 1470, right? And every year, there's no cap. So it's based on inflation, cost of living, determined in September, goes into effect January 1st of each year. So you can see how significant that raise has been for that group of employees. Which then causes a challenge for the district because now we have to keep pace with all the other positions above minimum wage. So that's one of the challenges that the Compensation Committee has been very aware of. How can we help with the compression that might be happening with that drastic change? So just something to keep in mind, before this employee group, we're budgeting conservatively, that they're going to go up another 15 cents, 50 cents, January 1st of 2026, okay? So that's kind of where we start off. Any questions about this first? Okay, so moving on, let's talk about those employees making above minimum wage. So to keep pace with what we're projecting for minimum wage, we're also projecting that we're going to increase 50 cents to those making above minimum wage. And you can see here what the cost of that is in yellow. I also wanted to share, what does that increase for those employee groups look like the last couple of years, two, the last ten years? So the next slide shows you, range D was at $10 in January of 2015. And now it's currently at 1550. So you can see the drastic increases that have to take place with this employee group as well because of minimum wage increases. You have to be mindful that there's not a lot of compression happening between the different pay ranges. So we want to move them at the same rate, or higher when possible, so that they can compete and stay ahead of that minimum wage increase. Questions?
That's an annual cost, 590,000 in that range?
For this coming year.
That's for this coming year, that's what we're estimating. Now, this is a combination of all funds too, right? Not just main operations, this is also your federal funds, anyone in transportation, child nutrition, so it's all funds combined.
And this group doesn't, does not get any of the stipends or grant money or anything?
They're all hourly employees.
Pure, okay.
Correct.
Can we go back to the state, the minimum wage? One more slide. I see 1470, that's over a wrap right now.
Yeah, and we're just projecting that it's going to be at 1520. It can come lower, it can come in higher, it's just based on what inflation looks like in September of 2025.
I just verified that basically, the minimum was 1470.
Yes. All right, so let's move on to our exempt employees.
So for the exempt employees, we're looking at a 3% increase. Cost of living is between two and three. And so we wanted to try to look at a 3% raise, just to try to buffer against that as much as we possibly could. So that's what we looked at for those employees. So that comes with 1.29, almost 1.3 million dollar cost. And again, not all of these folks are paid straight out of M&amp;O. There is a combination between M&amp;O, federal funds, and then some shared funds, you know, for some other positions. But the full tag for that 3% would be about 1.3 million dollars. And then on top of that, for teachers, they'll get the 3%. And then we're also looking to add another $3,000 to their base out of our classroom site fund. So we have been pretty conservative over the years with the classroom site fund money to make sure we never have an instance where teachers would make less out of that because tax revenue goes down. And because of that, we've been able to build up some money. And so we want to put more of that towards our teachers. And then you can see on the right there, the, kind of the comparison over the years that Luciano has provided, looking at a base of 6,000 in '23, '24 to a base of 12,000 in '25, '26. So a pretty, pretty nice little jump there. So again, for the teachers, it would be 3% increase to their base, plus this additional 3,000 added into their base. So they'll get this paid out over '26 or '21, however they select to receive their paycheck.
And that's a significant jump. So I was just looking at other school districts. When you think about just a total classroom site fund, if we have this approved for '15, too, for next year for teachers, in addition to the base pay, currently right now, I'll just read out some of their, so Crane School District right now paying 10,650. That's their total for this current school year. And then for Summerton, they're at 9,700. For Gatsin, they're at the higher end, which is 12,500 right now. So they're the highest. Then, the High School District varies based on whatever they have available. They pay out two.
They pay it all out every year.
So they have a range between 0 and 30,000. So it's hard for me to pinpoint exactly what that looks like each year. But I think it's just a different scenario when it comes to comparing that. But if, again, if this was approved, based on the current numbers, it would put us at the highest rate for the elementary school districts to be very competitive when it comes to teacher salary.
So right now, we're the lowest? Is that what I'm seeing here?
No, we're at 12,200.
I was looking at 23, 24, sorry.
Yeah. So now we're very competitive right now when it comes to 301 Gatsin. $300 more than us, based on the figures they provided to me today, so, yeah. No, we're in a good, we're in a prime position right now. I will tell you, the last two years, and we have principals here that can attest to it, we've had a lot of interest from experienced teachers that are from neighboring school districts, from charter school districts. You see some heads nodding over here. And that was never the case before. Because our, I'll just be honest with you, our compensation wasn't very attractive to those individuals. But we've made some significant increases, and I want to show you another slide that shows that. So looking at the teacher base pay here, you can see, measuring back to 2015, to keep it inconsistent, the base pay for teachers was 3198. And you can see since then, now our base pay is up at 438. So almost a 41% increase over the last 10 years. Significant, significant increases. Now, if you combine our 301 funds, our classroom site funds, to that, those numbers change a little bit more. So teacher base pay and 301 pay, or classroom site fund pay, in 2015 was 36 and change. And now currently, this school year, almost $20,000 more, or more than 20,000, right? So 56,000. So you can see some significant struggles we've had in our district.
Bless you.
And because of this, bless you, because of this, we're seeing a lot more applicants coming in from other neighboring school districts and charter school districts that are at least entertaining options that we have at school sites as well.
This is, this is their 56,000 is the...
Entry level.
Entry level what they're paying. That doesn't include if they're doing other things that have grant money associated. What percentage of teachers, I don't know if you know this, are participating in other activities that come with that money?
That's a good question. We would have to finalize a report to see what that looks like.
I don't know if there's that many programs available.
If there's a 21st century program, it's going to be higher.
Is there a lot of interest at your sites when, if you have 21st century, like 50% of your teachers?
We're applying for the first time this year because of...
Okay.
We have more teachers that want to teach at one more beginning.
Okay, okay, perfect. So yeah, quite a bit of interest in those areas.
So it's not only a 10% of the teachers are eligible to, so there's quite a bit, okay.
How well are these increases in pay compared to our inflation rates, as far as cost of living and those things?
The last couple of years, we've been pretty competitive. So last year, we passed on a 4% raise, plus 1,500, or actually a $3,000 increase to the base, 301 for teachers. The year prior, it was 8% that we passed on to teachers.
Two years of eight, I believe.
And then the year prior was 8%.
Above the inflation rate.
Right.
So we're ahead of the curve now.
Correct.
2.89 or something like that for sure.
Yeah.
And this was going to be a...
Three, so just a...
Three plus, plus a flat 3,000.
Right, so we...
The 22, 22, 23 school year, the 23, 24 school year were both 8% increases to teachers. Which is really great to help us in a competitive place. So I just wanted to visually show the dramatic increase.
Percent and a half, almost 2% above inflation.
Is there any incentives or any additional? And we start comparing a first year to a fifth year, a fifth year to a 10th year, are they, are they being compensated higher?
Absolutely. Because we always make sure the placement schedule is lower than whatever the raise is that we're going to implement for that following year. So if the board were to approve a 3% raise, we'd pass on like a 2% raise to the placement schedule. We're always mindful that we don't want a brand-new teacher coming in and making more than an experienced teacher.
Right. So that's what I don't want to see. I don't want to see them. I mean, if you're going to be there that long, you deserve that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we're very mindful of that. All right, moving on to a recommendation that we have. One of the clear feedback forms that we've heard from principals is they need more support, more coverage in specialty classrooms. So right now, currently, our specialty pair professionals work a 6.5-hour day. And so having that extended to seven hours, even though that doesn't seem like a lot of relief, brings a lot of relief to the school sites. And so moving them from 6.5 hours a day to seven hours a day, you can see the cost of that, 365,000. And you can see the programs that would positively impact, so autism, intensive, extensive, ABA, all of our self-contained programs across the district. So, it would be a lot of relief provided to those pair professionals. Last year, the board was able to implement a holiday pay reinstatement. So after they worked two years as a 6.5 employee, on their third year, they would transition to a holiday pay calendar, which has been received very, very positively by employees as well. So I think this would be the next step to really help incentivize individuals to stay in those positions, but also to provide coverage in the classrooms for the teachers to have those relief scores. So a lot of challenges that are in those classrooms at the moment. So, we've heard very loudly through from the principal group that this is one thing they'd like to see for the recommendation to include.
On these seven-hour days, does that qualify them for being a full-time employee?
Yeah, they're considered full-time, they're considered full-tying up because they meet the 30 hours or more. So they have health insurance that's already associated with this position. Okay, yes. Good question.
I know for me, seven hours of pay is not enough.
Right. Well, I will tell you, originally, we looked at all the specialty pair professionals, but we saw the price tag. We couldn't, with the conservative budget that we're looking into next year, we couldn't bring them all for a recommendation. So we wanted to take a first step towards that goal. So we wanted to bring all of our self-located first, and then look at next year, if there's a possibility to have it in the budget, then to bring the rest of the pair professionals as a second step.
365,000 for every 30 minutes. It says 365,000 for every 30 minutes.
Yeah, and that's just for this group?
The reason that's a little higher is because some of the pairs have been here long enough that they qualify for holiday pay. So now those holidays are included.
Yeah, we take it to eight-hour year, year 700,000.
Attention piece.
Right.
That turnover in those classrooms can be disruptive.
Right.
But to your question, anytime you see six-and-a-half-hour day, that's a full-time employee for us that would get benefits. So any pairs that are six-and-a-half would be benefit-eligible.
So all of our specialty pairs are 6.5 hours. The only ones that are not, if we approve a temporary position for that year because there's a certain need that might go away for the following year, then they're 5.5. Our full-time pair professions are all 6.5 hours. All right, moving on to a reclassification recommendation. This year, we received one from Lisa Thrower, Child Nutrition Director. And she would like to recommend that the baker position be reclassified from minimum wage group to a range C. And right now visually, just take a moment to kind of look at this here. What do you notice in range A? I know it looks like a vision exam, but far away.
Yeah.
It's a little small, but if you look at the minimum wage group here, range A, you see the cafeteria assistant here, correct? And then you see right here is the cafeteria baker. They're both in the same range right now. Yet, there are a lot more responsibilities that the baker has. And so right now, we're seeing not so many employees motivated to apply for that next step because the pay doesn't change. And again, the reason that this exists is because of the dramatic minimum wage increase that we've seen since 2015. We haven't been able to decompress that one range into two of them. So, there's a lot of justification to move that position from minimum wage to range C, which would be a dollar underneath the manager. So you can see the verification here from range A, 1470, to range C, 16 dollars. And one thing that Mr. Ponder probably will add here is that it's self-funded, right? So this is not going to be an impact to our maintenance and operations funds.
Right.
Yeah, they have their own budget through the federal government for child nutrition programs. So this would be through their revenue that they generate through lunches and à la carte stuff. So this wouldn't come out of our operating budget.
It's a point that's me.
So there, the child nutrition program is funded straight through the federal government, through their federal program. So, they get reimbursed from the government based on the number of meals that they serve, breakfast, lunch, how many kids qualify for free reduced lunch. So there's a formula that, that kind of plays into what their reimbursement rate would be. So all the revenue that they generate stays in their own fund. And then all the expenses associated with that stay in their own fund. So none of that crosses over to M&amp;O. So like Lisa is paid out of that fund and all of her employees.
So imagine it builds over time.
Well, yeah, ideally.
Yeah. She's done a really good job, so they've got a good buffer in there and she...
And I know 60,000 doesn't seem like a lot in the big scheme of things, but then, does that rate change from the federal government when you increase salaries? No. So it still has to come out of reimbursement.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we've been in the black for a long time. A lot of districts operate in the red, their student nutrition.
Yeah. She's done a really good job, and she was the one that brought this forward to us. And she said that there would be no issues with the sustainability of it, so we were comfortable with it.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to insurance. So pop quiz. What has been the highest renewal insurance rate the district has received in previous years?
28.
Good guess, what else?
I'm going to say 32.
Should have brought, yeah, a prize, 32.
There's more sandwiches.
So when we were fully... Your step, huh? When we were fully insured with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I believe it was that year, that was the starting point that we had one year. We had a very tough...
Draw you in at a low rate and then pick it up and then stop.
So of course, we had a great consultant that helped to lower that down to, I think it was like 19 or 18% at the end of the day. But that's where initially it started. So just going to paint that picture, when we were fully insured, it was just so variable when it comes to the renewal cost of the health insurance. So, this year?
Yeah, we're anticipating 15%. We won't know exactly until next month. Allison, our liaison with Capital Financial, who's the consultant for us, they're still running the actuarial numbers, so they like to have numbers through the end of March in order to more accurately predict what the next year will look like. So she said, we're, we're looking at some, something like a 15% increase for next year in terms of our rates. And so that's what we're budgeting right now. And then we'll know for certain, should be mid-April, after the actuaries can run the numbers and tell us like exactly where we should be in order for the plan to be able to sustain itself. So with that rate, we mentioned earlier that we have about 5 million that we prepaid into the insurance trust. And part of that was to be able to, you know, again, kind of flatten out some, some years that maybe are a little bit tougher, like a 15% rate increase. And so what we're proposing to do is, half of that 975, or well, a little less than half, about 450,000 of that would be covered through the $5 million that we have in the trust. And then the rest of that would be covered through the district's funds contributing to that next year. So it's kind of a half-district, half-insurance trust would, would cover that 975.
So employees aren't going to see a change in there?
They won't see, so the employee only won't. The only ones that will see a change is anyone who buys up. So if they buy up above our plan that we offer for free, they're, the 15% gap is going to increase it a little bit more. So they will see a change there, but those would be the only employees that would see it.
Majority of people are in the...
Yeah, 90% plus are in the free plan, the high deductible, yeah. So most of them won't see, won't see a difference.
Right. So their paycheck increase would be a true paycheck increase.
Yeah, yeah, it won't go to insurance.
And Dennis, just to clarify that, the revenue that's in the trust investment is, since that's part of a trust and that's insuffering?
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
Do you know what the return was?
It was about, I think we got 70, we get 70 to 80,000 a year out of it, if I remember right. So not an incredible interest rate, but it's something...
Better than zero.
And it was, we used that money for Julissa's position. That's how we covered that position, is the interest we're generating off of that was to cover her position so that we could educate our employees about how to be better users of our programs and the benefits that we have and how to use them more effectively.
And that's one thing we've heard from the Compensation Committee members, is that that presentation that she's giving at all the sites is being well-received. Employees are learning more about the details of their plan, their health benefits, that we have those supplemental plans like IMS, which is our maximum coverage, or 98.6 or Teladoc. So a lot of that is really being received by employees in a positive and engaging way, too.
Now, with the insurance, we did mention earlier that we were having some, some challenges with Aetna as our third-party administrator not playing nice in the sand, so to speak, with other vendors we wanted to bring in. That would be, that would give us better benefits for our employees. So one of those is Renalogic, which is a company that helps our employees with instate renal failure. They help them navigate that. It reprices their claims, so it's cheaper for the insurance, cheaper for, for everyone. But then they also help devise a plan, a long-term care plan, to help them slow down the growth of that disease, or perhaps even maybe turn the trajectory back in their favor. But Aetna did not want to provide any information to Renalogic in order for us to build that, that bridge, in order for those folks to be able to utilize that. So Aetna graciously allowed that to happen for one year, but said they weren't going to do that going forward. So that forced us into a position where we needed to find a third-party administrator who would partner with us rather than try to tell us how to operate our, our benefits. That was kind of the point of going self-insured, is the flexibility and the ability to make decisions that we felt were best for our employees. And since they didn't want to partner with that, we're proposing a switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield through a different third-party administrator called Personify. We met with Personify and Summit, two companies that said they could offer us whatever flexibility we wanted. But we felt like Personify had a little bit more of a, maybe a robust partnership method moving forward, where they would help problem-solve, rather than just administer the program. They would help us try to look into the future on things that might be challenges for us and how to navigate that and have suggestions for that. So we felt like that would be a good partnership going forward. So we felt like that would be a good partnership going forward. With Personify comes some additional benefits that we're gonna explore a little bit more heavily next year. We didn't want to go too hard into the first year, but there are some, some wellness benefits that we're gonna look at, as well as some possible reimbursement or rebate opportunities for our employees. Once they hit a certain level, they can start to get some money back for procedures. There is a healthcare blue book where they can go in and shop for the best value provider for whatever they need. So that may not necessarily be the cheapest, but it's the, the combination of price and quality of service, or speed of actually solving the issue, and not having someone just linger on and care for an eternity. How quickly could they actually address whatever the problem was, and then help the individual resolve that? And so it's kind of a marriage of those two, and then any of those providers down the road would earn you an opportunity to get rebates.
And the platform for Personify is very user-friendly. We're very impressed. It's all, everything in one. So that employees don't have to go to this website to get that information, to this website to get the information. It's all housed on one platform. And there's a mobile, obviously a mobile version of that, so we thought it'd be a great transition for employees as well.
Yeah. None of our plans will change, like the copays deductibles, all that will stay exactly the same. We're just shifting to Blue Cross instead of Aetna. We're, we've been told that the, the switch to Blue Cross alone should save our network money, it should save our benefit trust money just by switching to Blue. And then there's more providers in our area under the Blue network than Aetna, so it should make a, kind of a, a better win for our employees in that way.
Yeah, they, they talked at the trust meeting about, because I asked about the disruption, and if that study was done, and she, Allison, right, is the. Allison said that it was like a ninety-nine percent match, and there's even more providers in the area, which is great. And so, yeah, that was really good to hear. And it was quite a bit of savings, and more access, and the Renalogic, all those things. So it seemed like it was, yeah. Made perfect sense.
All right, moving on to summarize all of our recommendations. You can see here itemized the cost for teachers, three percent increase is what that is. The cost for our exempt employees, those that are not hourly, there's a cost of that.
Can't see.
It's a little smaller in there, but the screen shows it a little much.
These are superpowers. I'll break it now if you get half.
Okay, next time I'll do slide by slide. Let's try to save some, some treats.
Yeah.
You can see our hourly employees, we talked about those above minimum wage, those at minimum wage. The change for ESS, our special ed paraprofessionals, moving from six-point-five to seven hours a day. The cafeteria bakers, this is itemized here, even though it's not including the final cost because it's self-funded. And then the insurance cost, taking into consideration that we're gonna use some of the prepaid funds. And Dennis said, keep it under three million. I said, yes, sir.
Barely squeaked in there. But the other thing to mention too, we always build this assuming that all the costs will be absorbed by M and O, just so we know that it's something that we can sustain. But usually, it's about point seven-five to point eight of this will actually come out of M and O, and then the rest will be through different grant funds or federal funds. So if you look at that, it's about two point two to two point three-six million of this will be the M and O responsibility. And then with the seven hundred and eighty-five thousand in new money coming in, it drops that down below two million. So we, we think it's a, definitely a sustainable process forward. Comfortable with the number, kind of, you know. Pushed right up against where we wanted to be, but that's kind of where, you know, where we want to see it, is what, how do we maximize the money we have available to us to benefit our employees the best we can?
And at this point, we stopped the compensation because we asked each individual member, can you support this recommendation? Is there anything else you would want to change or revise or add? And everyone gave unanimous support for this, going back and thinking about all of those position representations that we have, so. So visually, we want to show you where the. Yeah, you wanna look up, it's a bit easier. So you can see here, the summary of employee raises, the majority is for teachers, forty-three percent. Second to that would be all of those employees that are hourly, above minimum wage, twenty-nine percent, and the funds are going there. And then you can see our exempt employees, then those at minimum wage, and then those administrators as well. So just gonna see the pie and what that looks like and the allocations of funds. And then showing all the expenditures together. The largest group here, so the teacher raise, those above minimum wage. The paraprofessional, special ed reclassification to seven hours, and all the other expenses are here as well. So we'd just like to show you visually what that looks like as well. We'll stop there, see if there's any questions, comments.
I like that the teachers are getting the big piece of the pie. They deserve it, they need it.
Now, this is not even taking into consideration the three oh one increase as well. This is just the base pay. So if you would add that, that would be a larger slice of pie, right? So moving on to timeline, which is really important, because we do have a new law that says we cannot send teacher contracts out until March fifteenth. So normally, we send teacher contracts probably next week, beginning of next week, so we have to hold off on that. So we have the official recommendation coming to the board on Tuesday of next week. And I have my team working right now on contracts, just in case the board says yes, they're gonna press one button, and all those contracts are gonna come out, right? So that's what's really important, is to have that approval so that we can be on time when it comes to recruitment of teachers, when it comes to the contracts, because teachers have fifteen business days to review their contract and make a decision. So that will delay our vacancies, our true vacancies in our district until the final Friday, the first Friday in April, is when we'll know true teacher vacancies. So that's why I think the timing of this is really important, to keep, to keep pace with recruitment of. The good thing is, no other district can beat us with contracts, and fifteenth is the earliest anyone can send them out. So we're all on the same plane, Bill, there. Questions?
So just one, just one more time.
Yes.
Our teachers will be the highest-paid district in Yuma, is that right?
Well, if it looks at base salary, right, this base salary will be the most competitive, but I don't know what other districts are gonna do moving into next year, right?
We're doing the same meetings we are.
High school district generally is higher. They get, they have more revenue per student.
So right now, we are higher than the high school district when it comes to base salary, but when you can, when you consider their three oh one funds, their classroom site funds, they can pay up to twenty thousand dollars, which we can't compete with. No elementary school can compete with that, or no elementary district.
Oh, that's what you were saying earlier. It's between zero and thirty thousand per employee.
Yeah, they, she rolls it out every year. I guess I should rephrase that. The grade school and junior high, we are the highest.
We would, yes, it depends with, if we remain this, if the other districts remain the same, yes, we'll be the highest. But again, I don't know what the other districts are planning to do. I know that there are some districts that are very competitive too, so they'll probably see what we propose.
I was gonna say, is there any coaching of the percentages?
Sometimes, yeah.
Sometimes, yeah.
We, historically, we've come out first usually, and so some of the other districts will respond to that. But we've been a little bit aggressive in the last few years to try to come out with a number that would push them to be uncomfortable to compete with, so that they can't just match it.
It would put them a month behind us.
What's that?
It would put them a month behind us, if they wait to see what we make.
Yeah.
They're not likely to want to do that.
Right. And by then, we've got contracts signed.
Yeah. Or maybe be able to get some employees from them.
The game changer for us will be the three thousand dollars that goes into the classroom site fund. I don't anticipate other districts will be doing that. So as far as the elementary school districts, we'll be very competitive.
What other incentives do we have to be able to do even better?
What was the question?
What other incentives do we have to do better? I mean, this is nice, but.
The only real piece we could look at more would be the classroom site fund. But I don't, what I wanted to do was kind of ramp it up, because what we want to do is perhaps evaluate if we could repeat this again next year. We want to get through this year and make sure, I'm always a little bit hesitant with where sales tax revenue is gonna come in, because that's how this is funded. And so we want to kind of ease into it. So we could maybe look more aggressively in that area, but that would be about the only place. We don't have a tremendous amount of money in the Indian Gaming Fund, or the, what's instructional improvement, I think is the technical term for it. That doesn't pay out. That's like three hundred bucks a year. It's not huge, so.
It's the three oh one, is what you're saying.
Three oh one classroom site fund. It used to be three oh one because it was Proposition Three oh one, and then when that expired, legislature renewed it on their own, so now it's just called Classroom Site Fund.
And what that means as well is that it's no longer voter-protected.
Right.
So if the legislature decides they want to pull it, adjust it, they can adjust it.
And that would be two thousand dollars, yeah, for our teachers.
What I like about this is the ESS makes a big difference between the six-point-five and seven. At the end of the day, when these children are going on those buses, we all know it takes time to get them on. And sometimes these pairs stayed on their own time, because each one, then you have the ones that don't want to get on. It has to be course to get on.
Yeah.
And that half hour is gonna make a big difference to help them out. I've seen this, and.
The same thing in the morning, getting them off the bus.
Same thing in the morning, yeah. So it's quite a process, so that's, this is great.
Right, and there's, as I, as I confirm, there's lots of room for teachers that want to increase their income by doing more.
Hourly coaching, middle school coaching stipends.
Right.
Yeah, hourly, through, probably three oh one, I mean, through twenty-first century. There's also other opportunities that come up along with.
There's gifted trainings that we have done, if you're a school, school improvement. Yeah. If the school is that, so there's some additional funding.
I always like the carrot hanging out there for people to, and then they get paid for their time, but.
Well, but the reality is, they do so much already, you know, and you want them to do more to get, to even be able to have a lifestyle, and that's where I don't agree. You know, I think that we need to have our teachers at a base rate that's gonna be livable, and not hang, not dangle the carrot that, oh, you do more, I'm gonna pay you, you know, your stipends, I'm gonna pay you these things. That it's hard for me on that, that I, you know, I just, I feel like they're not paid enough for what they do.
We agree.
Saying that for decades.
That's also a reason why we're adding three thousand dollars into the base classroom site fund, because that is automatically paid out in conjunction with their contract. So every two weeks, it's their base calorie, base salary, and they get the three oh one.
So they don't either dangle a carrot per se for that, right?
It's not into performance, performances, yeah, where they have.
In a different bucket, yeah.
So you're gonna have those people that are just gonna keep motivated.
Other thoughts?
I think it's a, I think it's a good, anytime you can be ahead of inflation.
Right.
By a reasonable amount, and your insurance isn't gonna take that.
Yeah.
That difference.
Yeah.
It's a true pay increase.
It's taken a long time. After two thousand eight, Arizona had the biggest cuts in the nation in two thousand eight to their public schools, and they were the slowest to come back. And never, still haven't come back anywhere near where, where other states have, so.
Look at where we rank nationally.
Forty-ninth and fiftieth, depending on the year.
That's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Right, so we, we made it a top priority for, you know, that fifty-one percent increase over the last, really nine years.
Any financial pitfalls that you see that may impact this in the future years?
The only thing would be like legislative action or significant decrease in enrollment, but nothing.
This is very sustainable.
It is, yeah, because, I mean, unfortunately, if enrollment declines, you know, we have FTE positions that go away, that kind of align the budget with what we have. So that's the, the downside of, of the nature of the business that we're in, but yeah, I don't see any issues with sustainability.
The challenge with that is that we're unsure what you're funding, so we don't know, we, we have to make our guess on what the enrollment's gonna be for the next year. We don't know what our revenue is, our revenue control limit's gonna be until after we've already committed all the funds. That's another reason why we have to maintain a little bigger cushion.
Yeah, day one, three, and five are usually really good indicators of where we'll be, but we don't know for sure until the hundredth day has passed, because that's what we're funded on. But usually, pretty closely, we can estimate where we'll be based on how we start the first ten days of the year.
Right. Anybody else have any questions? No? Leave us to that last piece of the, the meeting, to adjourn the meeting. We'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.